Let the record reflect that we are reconvening with all members present. Mayor Connolly and Councilwoman Bailey are absent and excused. Both are enjoying some time off out of state. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, can I please get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the executive session of April 9th, the executive session of April 23rd, and the regular session of April 23rd?
I'll move them.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. I'm subbing for the mayor. He's in Florida, enjoying some well-deserved time off with his family, and unfortunately, not getting a lot of sun right now. First, I want to have one housekeeping item. If you're here for Ordinance 26, 2018, which would be amending Chapter 195, which is our land development ordinance, this was discussed during our agenda review at 7:00 before we moved into closed session, and it's the intention of the council this evening to open the hearing for public comment, but then to adjourn the ordinance until our next meeting, which will be on Wednesday, May 30th. We want to let everyone know that who came out tonight to provide feedback on this ordinance that if you want to speak tonight or hold your comments at the 30th, either is a valid option, but we will not be taking a vote this evening. We apologize for any inconvenience, but we want to have the full governing body present for the discussion and vote, and the two members who are absent are also our representatives on the planning board.
All right.
We'll move into more happy things. A week ago Saturday, we celebrated May Day in Madison. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in sprucing up the town, including the hundreds of volunteers, our Public Works Department, and Lisa Ellis, who organized the event. Special recognition was given by Mayor Connolly to our CFO, Mr. Jim Burnett, who started this tradition 20 years ago. Thank you, Jim. We also celebrated Arbor Day, and the 33rd time we were recognized as Tree City USA. And so, we want to thank the Shade Tree Management Board and the friends of the Shade Tree for everything they do to help us achieve the award year after year. Last week, we also had the Police Unity Bike Tour to Washington, DC that came through Madison with hundreds of policemen and women riding bicycles in memory of fallen officers. Our own Joseph Longo, Police Officer Carmen DeCaro, and Madison residents Mark and Kristen Fabianski participated in the ride. Mark and Kristen wrote in honor of her brother, who was killed in the line of duty. We'd also like to invite all residents to attend the annual Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony on Monday, May 28th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Memorial on Condorsa Way. We will proceed down Main Street and end with a formal ceremony at the Hartley Dodge Memorial. Employee for the month of May, rather, is Zach Ellis for his commitment in getting all the backstops repaired for the baseball fields at low cost and in time for the start of the baseball season. And we also want to acknowledge that Chief Lou DeRosa of the Madison Fire Department has celebrated 35 years as of May 11th. Okay, now on to proclamations. Okay, this proclamation of the Borough of Madison is a recognition of National Police Week, which starts or started on May 13th and runs through the end of this week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, the day that honors all peace officers who have died in the line of duty, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the names of the law enforcement officers, rather, who have been killed in the line of duty are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas the members of the Madison Police Department play an essential role in preserving the rights and freedom of all citizens of Madison, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of their police department, that members of the Madison Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against suppression or intimidation. And whereas the Madison Police Department is a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body proclaim May 13th through 19th, 2018, as National Police Week in the Borough of Madison, and publicly salute the service of the law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Oh, sorry. (Inaudible).
Thank you. Unfortunately, Chief Datchison couldn't make it tonight, so I proudly accept this on behalf of the chief and the rest of the department. We just ask you, especially this week, on Police Officers Week, to keep the memory of all officers who died in the line of duty in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. John Kraldammel and Laura Sostek. This is a proclamation of the Borough of Madison in recognition of the Trittown 55+ Coalition's Ride for Seniors Program on its one-year anniversary. Whereas Trittown 55+ Coalition, a nonprofit, community-based organization, is dedicated to the needs of senior residents living in Chatham Borough, Chatham Township in Madison, and whereas May 23rd, 2018, marks the first anniversary of the Trittown 55+ Coalition Rise for Seniors Program, and whereas the Coalition acknowledges the importance of senior residents taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter what age, and whereas committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, Trittown 55 Coalition can enrich the lives of seniors by implementing programs and services to create desirable communities guided by the World Health Organization's age-friendly themes, providing access to subsidized on-demand transportation to qualified residents throughout the rides for seniors program, working with local businesses to implement age-friendly practices to create an accessible, inviting atmosphere for all customers involving older adults in community planning events and other activities, providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. And whereas since April 2017, the Rise for Senior Program has provided over 2,400 rides to 285 seniors living within the community, now therefore, I, Robert Connolly, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend congratulations to Trittown 55 Coalition on the first anniversary of the Ride for Seniors Program, and in the honor of the National Older Americans Month, urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Say your words.
We are very appreciative of this because this actually, you know, this demonstrates your concern for seniors and your commitment to helping us and making our three communities more age-friendly. Next week on May 23rd, from 1:30 to 2:30, you're all invited to come to our one-year anniversary at the Y. We'll be sending out some invitations this week, so you're all invited to participate. It's going to have a barbershop chorus, it's going to have a free raffle for the seniors' giveaways, and it should be a good time. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you've done. I have the first one for the Health Department. The Health Department inspectors are beginning to plan pool inspections. The state of New Jersey recently changed the requirement for pool operations, and our inspectors are becoming familiar with these new regulations and will incorporate them into their inspection reports. Our health inspectors continue to monitor updated plans at several retail food establishments. They gave the final approval for the opening of the Madison Bagel Cafe. Our nurse reports at the female cancer screening that was held on May 7th had a good number of participants. We also have upcoming clinics in Madison on Thursday, June 7th, for CMP blood testing, and another one in Springfield a week later on Thursday, June 14th. Madison residents are free to go to either. On Monday, May 11th, there's a men's cancer screening at the Madison Health Center. Appointments are still being accepted. Please call the Health Department to schedule for further information. There are several upcoming programs that are being done in collaboration with Massa and the Madison-Chatham Coalition, including a town hall meeting about vaping and underage drinking, preparing materials for graduation gala, planning the yoga life skills program for the middle school, and continued marijuana education. And finally, there will be information about sun safety and mental health for residents available on media outlets. Please call the Health Department for further information. Next, we have Public Works and Engineering, and also, I believe, Finance and Borough Clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you very much. Engineering. Public Service Electric and Gas Company continues working on Main Street using subcontractors Sansari Construction and J. Fletcher Creamer Company. Tilcon New York will resurface half the roadway disturbed by the gain main and service replacements later this month. PSENG has completed partial paving of Greenwood Avenue, Del Barton Drive, Treadwell Avenue, Nordling Lane, and Loraway and Surrey Lane. The Borough of Madison has been working with Cefeli &amp; Son and Tilcon New York on curb and drainage improvements of the Mill and Overlay Streets, including Barnesdale, Winding, Keep, and Kings Road. This work will continue until complete, and then repaving will be completed by the Tilcon New York later this month. 2018 road improvement has started with the Midwest Construction beginning work on Greenwood Avenue and Cefeli &amp; Son's beginning work on Rosewood Drive, Crestwood, and Kensington. We expect the duration of the construction work to be approximately six weeks, weather permitting. Joe Med Contracting has been working on Central Avenue water main replacement and is expected to complete that work by the end of May. There has been several water emergency relating to the aged infrastructure on the existing water mains and services on that road. The residents' cooperation during this construction work is greatly appreciated. So, in 2018, sanitary sewer cleaning, the video and repair contracts are scheduled to be open on Thursday, May 24th at 10:00 a.m., and then that work will resume. I got a brief report from our Building and Construction Department that is always really very, very busy. Just for the month of April, they issued 132 permits, they performed 759 inspections, and they completed 88 Oprah requests, and their total construction fees collected were $82,708 in comparison to 2017 at this time. That was $55,565. So, they're always extremely busy. I would like to read part of a letter regarding Ms. Valerie Walters, who is the technical assistant in the Building Department. It's written by a senior vice president from Paramount Assets, who actually visited the Building Department, and he says, "Ms. Valerie Walters' commitment to the municipality and the public exemplifies the pure and true personal and professional qualities that reflect positively on the Borough of Madison. It is refreshing to be able to interact with a true professional who sincerely cares and went the extra steps to ensure that she provided the utmost customer's care. It is a very unique and uplifting occurrence, since most other municipal employees in other townships aren't as professional and helpful." So, I'd like to congratulate her. I mean, this is an awesome letter, and she does a really great job. From DPW, mechanics are always busy because they're servicing and repairing police vehicles. They had to repair a front-end steering component on a DPW vehicle. They made and welded brackets for the fire department. The Parks Department is out there marking the athletic fields for the recreation activities, doing their general park maintenance. They're managing all the flag assignments. As you notice, the flags have been going up and down for different reasons. And they assisted with the storm cleanup. The Roads Department is still picking up the storm debris, and they set up and cleaned for the town swap, and I hope that you all come to that because it was a very successful day. And they set up and cleaned for May Day. They're filling potholes, tree planting, and of course, one of the things they do is they pick up white goods and appliances on a Friday. The Sewer Department is doing various markouts for PSENG, and they're repairing multiple storm basins. They're inspecting and cleaning storm basins for defects for the paving programs that are going on with the 2008 roads being taken care of. They supplied basin heads and grates and frames for milling and paving contractor. Now, from Finance, from the Clerk's Office, "In anticipation of the June 5th primary election, the Clerk's Office will remain open for late-night voter registration on May 15th, 2018, until 8:00 p.m. Applications for vote-by-mail ballots and voter registration forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org." From the Finance Department, "The CFO and staff are starting work on the annual insurance review. As you can imagine, the Borough has a number of properties, vehicles, and equipment, and they must all be listed on the insurance schedule so that they are covered properly. The finance staff works with the Morris Joint Insurance Fund on a number of schedules to make sure that everything is covered properly by insurance. This is a very important annual process, and it takes about 10 weeks to complete." From the Utility Billing, "Over the past two years, the Utility Billing Department has done an exceptional job implementing a lot of changes. The list of what they have done in the last two years is the water bills and electric bills were merged into one system." So, we each got a copy, and this is what the, I'm sure you all know what the new bill is, but it's been very, very helpful, I think, for most people. "The new bill form was created with more information for the customer. The handheld devices have completely replaced paper books in the field." Amen. I say to that. "New processes were implemented for utility billing penalties, and other internal controls were developed. In the utility end-of-day sheet, it's a very simple but important document that helps the department keep track daily, monthly, and year-to-date activity. For example, today, the department processed $72,988 in electric utility payments and $11,023 in water utility payments. They issued $31,031 in Book 13, electric utility bills, and those bills included $2,275 in dividends to the customers." So, we really want to thank the Utility Billing Department for all their hard work, and I think that one of the things that we kind of forget about that particular department, and I hear it very, very often from people, when people call up and they have a question about their electric bill or their water bill, they are treated respectfully, and those people in that department work very hard and take it as a personal thing to make sure that the resident is happy with what goes on. So, I'd say thank you very much to Donna and all of those people out there. They've done a great job. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Public Safety, Mr. Wolfowitz.
Thank you. The Madison Police Department wants to warn our residents about a scam that's recently resurfaced, and I can tell you it's real because I received one of these phone calls. What happens is the caller will tell you that they're calling from JCP&amp;L, and your power will be shut off unless you pay your bill immediately. Paying it immediately means that they are asking for your information regarding a charge card. Police Department has two things to say about this. One is never give out personal information over the phone. And secondly, please recall that JCP&amp;L is not our electric provider. We have our own electric company. But nevertheless, these calls are happening. During April, Madison's Police Department assisted the Madison YMCA by participating in the Healthy Kids Day Event. Madison officers provided parents with children IDs as part of the event. If you're listening or watching this and you would like such an ID, please call Detective Paul Papamarcus at 973-593-3014. Then on May 8th, Chief Datchison attended the Protect Your City, Protect Your People Seminar at the British Council at New York City concerning vehicle-borne attacks. The aim of the seminar was to look at the severity of the vehicle as a weapon and the impact it has on security design. From the Fire Department, "During the month of April, the Fire Department responded to 15 general alarms, 20 still alarms, 22 investigations, 48 medical calls, and that means a total of 105 calls in April. They also completed 53 fire prevention inspections and 23 smoke detector inspections." Tonight, which unfortunately, we can't attend because we're here, our Fire Department is doing joint training with the Florham Park Volunteer Fire Department at our headquarters on rope rescue and rigging operations. And then, as a final note, on Sunday morning, May 20th, at 8:00 a.m., our Fire Department will be participating in a water movement drill hosted by the New Vernon Volunteer Fire Department. The drill is, in fact, what it sounds like. New Vernon, in most areas of town, does not have a hydrant system, and so what this is about is moving water to the place where it's needed. Many area departments will be working together in an attempt to flow 1,000 gallons a minute for 20 to 30 minutes using tenders, dump tanks, and drafting ponds to refill the tenders in a water shuttle operation. It's a lot of water, 1,000 gallons per minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfowitz. Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you. As usual, the mayor has already taken most of my report. Recreation, Little League, and softball are off to the races. Lots of little kids swinging bats, so be careful around the fields. The seniors center is undergoing a renovation. They are getting new windows, which will allow for it to be much brighter and welcoming, as well as new flooring and, I believe, new furniture. So, within the next week or two, the seniors center will be back in action, and I'm sure we will see an increase in seniors. Finally, I don't have to talk about May Day because that's over, so I'm going to switch to the other topic, which is the farmer's market. The farmer's market is coming back. It will, there'll be a ribbon cutting at 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 31st. We have a wonderful lineup of returning and new vendors, and we will be offering the Frequent Shopper Card again, and I was recently assured that John Hoover was going to be at the farmer's market again. So, I mean, really, you have to go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Maureen. I think we're supposed to talk into the microphone this close so it can be heard. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be very short because there were some things covered in the Water Department already, on Central Avenue particularly, but there was on April 24th, an emergency water main repair at Spring Garden and Ashland, and on May 1st, the waterline repair, a waterline repair on Central Avenue, in addition to what Councilwoman Vitale had already reported. The AB airstripping tower and the airstripping tower at D. Well Treatment were both inspected by Lane Christiansen Company. The report is pending. We don't have the results yet. As soon as we get them, we'll share them. In terms of the Electric Department, besides all the normal markouts and house services and streetlight repairs, the project on Kings Road from Greenwood Avenue to the Madison Bike Shop is going well. All the work with the contractor that was helping us has been completed, and now the department has to go back and wire up all the light beers, then set all the posts and light fixtures. The contractor will be starting on our Kings Road substation repairs in the next week or two. They removed, they continue to replace poles and transfer services on Highcrest and Highview and Creelcrest, and they're continuing to remove branches from power lines and wires on several streets in town. That's it. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Communications and Petitions.
Yes. Mayor and Council received one email dated May 2nd from Kathy Daly of West End Avenue regarding Ordinance 26, 2015.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is the first of two invitations for discussion. This is your opportunity to ask questions and make comments on any discussion items on the agenda, so that does not include the ordinances that are up for hearing tonight, but it does include the following: the agenda discussion on the 2018 farmer's market, ordinances that are on first hearing, so that's the appropriation of $42,000 for firefighting equipment, appropriating a portion of the funds needed to purchase a new pumper truck in 2020, appropriating $50,000 for the purchase of a new vehicle, appropriating $100,000 for the purchase of radio equipment, appropriating $125,000 for the purchase of copper cable for the Kings Road feeder lines, and the Waverly Place upgrade, appropriating $200,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purchase of one-half of a two-family condominium unit at 10 Division Ave. And then the following resolutions: the retirement of a firefighter, amending a previous resolution, authorizing St. Baldry's Children's Cancer Event, authorizing the purchase of services from General Electric, authorizing an agreement for employee assistance program with Atlantic Health, authorizing a special event permit to allow the public use, I'm sorry, the use of public parking by the Rotary Club for a public shredding event on May 19th, approving the raffle license application submitted by the Rotary Club also, approving a grant agreement between the Borough and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, authorizing execution of agreements with property owners and merchants for live-stream camera access, approving a bingo license application submitted by the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, approving a raffle license application submitted by the PTO at Torrey J. Sabatini School, authorizing an emergency water supply agreement with the Southeast Morris Municipal Utilities Authority, appointment of summer interns, authorizing the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research to hold a bicycle ride at Drew University on Saturday, May 16th, I'm sorry, June 16th, rather, and finally, the appointment of Kyle McDermott to the position of police officer. There's going to be another invitation for discussion later in the meeting for any or other topics. Upon recognition of the chair, please proceed to the lectern and give your name and address and print the same on the sheet provided for the record. I'll let you know when three minutes have elapsed, and I will stop you at four minutes. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing no one, we'll move on to agenda discussions. First up, we have Mrs. Ellis on the farmer's market.
Councilmember Byrne gave most of my presentation. I will make this very quick. I just want to give you a quick update on the market. It's pretty much a same-as-last-year report. We will be on Central Ave again, same hours. Drew University and Gary's Wine and Marketplace are our major sponsors again. I have just finished booking 20 great musicians to perform every single week at the market, 20-plus, and sometimes we'll have an occasional doubleheader. On opening day, the Central Avenue School Chorus will be coming down again as well. The Chamber of Commerce will continue to have a booth every week. We will have a booth available for nonprofits, and we will be able to have at least one booth a week for special pop-up vendors. We have 17 returning vendors, and we have at least six new ones. I have a couple more that have not yet committed but may end up coming, at least on a weekly basis. We have a new cookie vendor, Baked with Jake, Spice &amp; Tea, Black River Spice &amp; Tea, Homespun Chili, Stony Brook Meadows, which is a small farm specializing in meat. Daddy Matty's Barbecue from Madison will be a weekly vendor as well, and we have a Daddy Matty's Barbecue from Madison will be a weekly vendor as well, and we have a chocolate vendor, so we're trying to really round out the offerings. The one major loss, I'm warning you all now, is kettle corn. Old-fashioned kettle corn will not be at the market this year. The owner, Ray Zalai, had to have his knee replaced, so we will miss him, but hopefully he will be back for Bottle Hill Day. I think what the, these are, I have a few concerns of things that we will be facing this season. We have major road construction pending on Greenwood Avenue, Central Avenue, and there's major drainage work planned for Elmer Street. So I've been working with the, with Bob Vogel and Frank Russo on the timing of these things. I'll continue to watch those. I'm also, the paving for Central Avenue is probably much later in the summer or earlier in the fall, but in the interim, I've asked the engineers to reach out to the county because that upper block of Central, the surface is very uneven, and I have safety concerns. So hopefully, you know, they'll be successful and we'll at least get some of those potholes patched. I think that's crucial. And then I'm working with the police. I know Chief Datchison has been going to seminars, et cetera, about safety, and, you know, we will do whatever we can to make sure the market is as safe as possible for everyone. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much for the presentation and look forward to some local shopping.
And I'll just reinforce the invitation to the ribbon cutting on May 31st, 1:45.
1:45.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much. So this is going to be listed on the Consent Resolution 164 this evening. Okay, we now have ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held Monday, April 23rd, 2018. All posted and filed according to law, copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 25, 2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Hartley Dodge Memorial Underground Storage Tank Site Remediation Compliance.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 25, 2018, and ask anyone with comments to please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move Ordinance 25-2018.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes, yes.
I declare Ordinance 25, 2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 26, 2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 Land Development Ordinance for the Borough.
As I noted, we're going to take any comments that people want to make tonight, but there'll be a second opportunity. At our second meeting this month will be Wednesday, the 20th.
No, it's the 30th.
30th, rather, sorry. So I open the hearing for Ordinance 26, 2018, and ask anyone with comments to please step forward. Kathy?
Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. I just, I wasn't here for the communications and petitions, so I just wanted to make sure that the council members did receive by communication.
Mm-hmm. We did.
We did.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, at this point, I will close the hearing. I look for someone to make a motion.
Okay. I move to adjourn Ordinance 26-2018 to May 30th to continue public comment.
I second it.
Any questions or comments at this time, any discussion? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 27.
Ordinance 27, 2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code to include time limit restrictions for parking on John Avenue.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 27, 2018, and ask anyone with comments to please step forward now. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move Ordinance 27-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 27-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Okay, at this point, we have the second invitation for discussion. At this point, you can comment on any matter. The same rules apply for noting your name and address, writing them down, and the time limits are the same. Would anyone like to be heard at this time? Jesse?
This is on any matter?
Yep. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Jesse Esposito, Community Place. And again, I'm here with the parking situation on Community. It's really gotten to a point where people just park their car. I have a car parked there right now that's been there nine days and nights and doesn't move. And, you know, this has been going on now, and I know you have a, you know, you could park on the street as long as you call, but there has got to be something that restricts this or limits it. Because you've got people who go on vacation, and just because they're calling every night, their car is there 24/7. It's ridiculous. Also, with the businesses parking down on Community Place, I still don't understand why this still exists. Why can't they park in the parking lot like every other business does? But we've got five now. I've discovered three more vehicles other than the two that have been parking there. I don't know where they go, but they walk up to Main Street and Park Avenue and go into their stores. I just think that something really needs to be done. Coming here for over a year, asking for help with this, and all I keep getting is postponements. So I would like to know what we can do about the parking on Community Place. I would like an update on the signage. I'd like an update on the businesses, why they can park there, and why we can't do an extension of the front of Community Place where there is no parking on one side of the street, make it the same all the way through. And I found that one of the only complaints or complainers was Tony Cook, Mr. Taylor, who, the one with the frat house. So his vehicles can all park there. And that's, you know, and they fight for parking with the business owners who park there all day. So it's just a mess there, and I would really, really like to see something done.
Thank you. Al Pescher concerns law to the mayor. He's been working on this. He'll be back tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like, else like to make a statement this evening? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting, and we'll move on to introduction, introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Wednesday, May 30th, 2018. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 28, 2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $42,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of firefighting, protective clothing, harnesses, and rigging equipment for the Fire Department.
I move Ordinance 28-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry.
Sorry, I apologize.
I'd just like to add that with the Fire Department and the Police Department, we frequently hone in on the expensive pieces of equipment that they, that they need. What, what we are approving tonight is the actual rigging that saves their lives in case they get stuck in a fire or rescuing a dog out of a dry well. So I, you know, people complain about how expensive it is for us to have our own Fire Department, but I think we have to understand that they are protecting us, and we have to protect them.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, will the, please call the roll.
I think I'd like to just make a comment that each one of these ordinances are part of the capital, the capital fund that we approved along with the budget. So now that the budget is passed, the ordinance is, you're going to, we're going to start seeing all the ordinances and the different departments spending the money.
Correct, and the Fire Chief is very good at getting his in.
Yes, absolutely.
But it is important to make sure that the people protecting us are well protected. So I appreciate the comments. Now can we call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover? Yes.
Ordinance 29-2018?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $43,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new pumper in the year 2020.
I move Ordinance 29-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yeah, one point I'd like to raise is that if you read this carefully and wondering how we got a pumper for $43,000, the answer is, we did not. This is part of the capital program that we've been talking about for a while, which is to take large purchases, and the pumper will certainly be one of them, and, in a sense, dedicate funds each year for a number of years so that we keep the capital appropriations relatively flat. And that's what's going on here. Just as an FYI, a pumper costs about a quarter of a million dollars.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance 30-2018?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $43,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new vehicle.
I move Ordinance 30-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Ms. Byrne?
Who's getting this vehicle?
Fire Department.
What? Oh, this is all Fire Department tonight? Okay. Never mind.
Kept the id on me.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance 31-2018?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of radio.
I move Ordinance 31-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-2018?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $125,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a primary voltage copper cable from, for the King's Road feeder lines up to Green Village Road and for the Waverly Place upgrade.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 32-2018.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance 33-2018?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purchase of one-half of a two-family condominium unit at the Millennium Development 10 Division Ave.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 33-2018.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Do you want the Consent Agenda Resolution? Can you please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move Resolution 151-2018 to Resolution 172-2018.
I second them.
Any discussions or any items that need to be pulled? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. Can I get the vouchers read?
Current fund is $320,340.65. General Capital Fund, $69,888.51. Electric Operating Fund, $379,988.27. Water Operating Fund, $28,306.40. The Water Capital Fund, $286,377.19. And the Trust, $17,861.72. Total bill list is $1,120,762.74.
I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
No new business? In light of the fact there's no new business and the record, the near record we set for the shortness of this meeting, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor. One more thing to do.
Get this picture.
Great job. Give it to John.
Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. If you like this, you can come back at the end of June. I'll be doing this again. No, just sit right there and take my picture. That's good. Thank you very much.